Good evening, citizens of Portsmouth, my colleagues on council. I will now call to order in the public work session for Tuesday, June 13th, 2023. And I would ask that my colleagues note their presence electronically.
Six members of city council are present.
Thank you, ma'am. And Madam City Manager, are you ready to take the floor?
Yes, sir, I'm ready.
You have the floor, ma'am.
Yes, good afternoon evening, everyone. So we're going to start this evening with a presentation from MGT, presented by Ms. Vernetta Mitchell. This is for the Portsmouth disparity study update.
Ms. Mitchell, if you would come to the podium, please, and speak into the microphone. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Absolutely, I love Portsmouth.
Well, you know what, we're going to put that on a commercial.
Yes, I do. I love Portsmouth. Okay. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, and Manager Terry. My name is Vernetta Mitchell. I'm a director with MGT Consulting Group, and I have the pleasure of conducting your disparity study, your second disparity study. And this afternoon, what I'd like to do is give you an update on where we are, and when, more importantly, we anticipate to complete your study. And I'll be back before you to present the findings.
Thank you, Ms. Mitchell.
So as a reminder, I just want to talk very briefly about the study's objectives. The disparity study determines the effects of race, ethnicity, and gender on businesses' ability to do business with the city of Portsmouth, as well as surrounding industries in the marketplace. And in doing so, we identify and utilize your spend data for a study period, and I'll talk about that in a few minutes, and determine how much money have you actually already spent with minority and women-owned businesses versus non-minority and non-women-owned businesses. The five business categories that we are analyzing is construction, architecture and engineering, professional services, non-professional services, and goods and equipment. So based on the spend data that you have provided to us, we have broken out all of your spend into those categories, and then we will review and identify how many minority women-owned businesses you've spent in each of those various categories. Once we have identified your spend or your utilization, we're also, we're in the process right now of identifying your availability of firms in your marketplace that actually sell the types of goods and services that you buy. And that's really important to understand and have that apples-to-apples comparison. And then we'll identify if, and I will emphasize if, because we do not know yet, if there is disparity between the utilization of minority and women-owned businesses and the availability of those firms in your marketplace. Then we will provide to you, if there is disparity, recommendations to address those disparities that would hopefully encourage the opportunities for MWBE firms to do business with the city. How I wanted to structure this today was to really kind of talk more about our research questions and our research methodology in conducting these studies. I thought it would be fitting to just kind of talk about what are we seeking to answer in this study? And so the first thing is, as you may be aware, there are many court cases, court decisions, that really shape the way that disparity studies should be conducted, as well as how programs should be implemented and administered if disparity is identified. And so one of the first things that we did when we started the study was to answer the very first research questions. What are the legal guidance and standards that we must follow, that you must follow in order to design your disparity study? And we've outlined that in the draft legal framework chapter that we have submitted to the city for review. The second is, what are the current policies and procedures that you have in place that encourages MWBE firms to do business, to bid on city contracts, to submit proposals on city contracts? And so we've identified, we've assessed, and we've provided a summary of what your existing policies and procedures are, and have some thoughts around recommendations for adjusting those policies and procedures to be more inviting for minority women-owned firms to bid on city opportunities. In terms of your contract dollars or your spending that I spoke about earlier, the preliminary numbers that we are analyzing is $354 million over a five-year study period. And the five-year study period that we're analyzing your data is from fiscal year 2017 to fiscal year 2021, in all of the procurement categories, the five procurement categories that I discussed just a few minutes ago. That $354 million does not include your utility bills. It does not include grants that you may offer to universities. It doesn't include any employee expenses. So these are your purcha-, your procurable expenses where you actually either go out to the business community and solicit bids or quotes to do business on your contracts. Now, when we talk about your relevant geographic and product markets, one of the first steps is to identify who, where are firms located, and who are you currently doing business with? That was another one of the key steps that we need to identify and analyze as part of that legal guidance and framework. So looking at how you procure your dollars and with whom you do that with, the firms that you do most of your business with, at least 75%, are located in the Virginia Beach, Norfolk, Newport News metropolitan statistical area in which Portsmouth falls. And so that is what's determined as your relevant geographic market area. And that's important because as we are identifying availability of firms in your marketplace, this is the marketplace that we're identifying those firms. And so that's really important moving forward. If there is any particular remedies to address any potential disparity, this is the market area that you will focus to identify those firms and invite them to bid on your projects. The final product market by NAICS code, we have categorized every line item of spin that you provided to us by NAICS code, the North American Industry Classification System coding, to identify exactly what it was that you spent. That's exactly how we identify the availability of firms. So again, you have that apples-to-apples comparison. And the product market, when we are done calculating it, will tell you exactly how much you've spent of that $354 million in each individual NAICS code. And that is helpful as well because it will also help you to identify where you need to focus any particular outreach. So if you have an NAICS code, let's say buying microphones, and you've only spent $10,000 in doing that, but you have another NAICS code of flooring, and you've spent $20 million, you really want to focus a lot of your attention on trying to identify minority women-owned businesses who can bid on those opportunities. So your product market is very important in helping you determine and assess where do you spend your efforts to increase those opportunities. The next question is, what is the availability of firms? I spoke about that, that's really important to identify. MGT utilizes a methodology called the custom census approach, where identifying what you've spent by NAICS code, identifying those firms from Dun &amp; Bradstreet with those same NAICS codes, and doing a short quote-unquote census to determine, one, are they in your marketplace? Two, do they sell the type of goods or service that they have listed in Dun &amp; Bradstreet? And then three, more specifically, asking what is their business ownership classification? African-American, Asian-American, non-minority male, non-minority female, et cetera. And so that gives us a total of your availability of firms based on your business, on their business ownership classification. That availability estimate is currently in progress. So if you receive calls from businesses saying, "Who is calling me, asking me for this information?", that is what it is. We are making those calls as we speak. Oops. Ah, I did something wrong. There we go. Okay. The next research question is, is there disparity? And that's exactly what you want to know. Is there disparity between the utilization of minority women-owned businesses compared to the availability of those businesses in your marketplace? And those ratios have not been calculated yet because of availability. Disparity is the calculation of utilization divided by availability times 100, and you get a ratio. When I come back before you with the findings, I'll go more into the ratios, but just very high level. If that ratio falls below 80, then there's significant disparity, meaning there are many more MWBE firms in the marketplace than you are doing business with. And so that's the one we really want to focus if we find that you have that ratio in your findings. Is there disparity in unremediated markets? And that is your private sector. One of the early court decisions of Crowson versus Richmond is that public agencies cannot be passive participants of marketplace discrimination in the marketplace in which you work. So MGT has conducted a private sector analysis using census data, American Business Survey data, and some other statistical data to determine if disparity is occurring in the private industry. Now, this is not your data, this is data from the private industry. And so that chapter is in progress and will be delivered to the city later on this week or early next week. So the next couple of questions, nine, eight, nine, and 10, really speak to the qualitative or anecdotal data collection, which is a very key piece. So we like to coin or a thought process around an MWBE program and the need for one. If you think about your program being the bench of a stool, there are three legs that are very important to make sure it supports that program. One is your quantitative, in which we just talked about in your spending. Another is your, excuse me, another is your qualitative, which is your anecdotal, and the third being your private sector. All three of these legs to that stool really need to say the same thing or have the same message in order for your program to be substantiated if you, if we find that you need to implement one. So I want to spend a few minutes talking about how do we reach out to the business community? Because one of the most important questions that we ask of the business community is, what has been the effects of your ability to do business based on your race, ethnicity, and gender? Were there discriminatory behaviors in the marketplace, be it overt or intentional, that you have faced in trying to do business, not only with the city, but any primes or contractors that the city hires, as well as in the marketplace? And so it's very, very important to have that qualitative research and that data conducted for the study. And so as part of our engagement, we conducted a business engagement meeting where we invited businesses to come in and tell us about their experiences. But more importantly, we also gave them an idea of what this study is and why it's so important to receive their feedback. We mailed out 3,000 postcards to businesses in your relevant geographic marketplace that I discussed earlier, and it invited them to complete a survey or contact us for a one-on-one interview. We conducted one-on-one interviews with business owners. We also had interviews with professional organizations in the marketplace. What we find is that professional organizations, who are advocates of supplier diversity programs or provide technical assistance or business assistance, are very keen to what's happening in the marketplace. So hearing from them on some of the barriers that businesses may have was very key. So we did conduct those interviews with professional organizations in your market. And then, of course, surveys are also taking place as we speak. Okay. So where are we today? As I mentioned, the availability estimates are being calc-, well, the survey to identify your availability is in progress right now. The expected completion date of that is this month. Then we'll be able to calculate availability and then calculate disparity immediately with those numbers. So that's expected this month. I also want to commend the city for doing something a little bit different. So MGT is always looking forward, is always forward-thinking. What do we do beyond just identifying disparity? And it's not really just the disparity itself, but what is the economic impact of either utilizing or not utilizing minority women-owned businesses in your marketplace? So we are providing an economic impact analysis of your MWBE program that will identify your indirect and induced impact, how much money is actually flowing through the economy. And when that money is flowing through the economy, it produces taxes, it produces jobs, your value add back to the city. And so as soon as the availability analysis is complete, we'll have that economic impact analysis conducted, as well as a return on investment. If you invest so many dollars, or the investment that you currently have with the city, how much is coming back to the city in terms of return on investment? And then in July, we will be presenting the draft and final reports. And then I will hopefully be seeing you sometime as soon as we can get back on the agenda.
Thank you, ma'am. That was very, very informative. Are there any questions from my colleagues on council? Councilman Hugel, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thanks for this report. Important information to help us. I have actually three questions. The first is, in the $354 million that you're studying across probably more than the five areas that you listed on the first slide, so what percentage of that $354 million is covered by the five areas that you're specifically studying? Construction, architecture, professional, non-professional, service, goods, and equipment? Is it 99% or something far less than that?
If I'm understanding your question, what is the percentage of spend between the five categories of the $354?
The total spend across those five categories out of the $354.
Is the $354.
So $354 is only in those five areas?
Yes.
Is there more than three, so there must be more than $354 that's spent in other categories?
Totality is more than $354. We identify those categories.
Yeah, so how much more than $354 do we know? I mean, what I'm trying to get to is, you picked five categories. Presumably, they cover the majority of the spend. Is it 99% of the spend or 75% of the spend? And is there a big percentage of other that's out there that we're just not studying?
Great question. So what I can get back to you, because I don't have that with me, is what was the total dollars spent during the study period that was provided to us?
Okay.
Okay?
Perfect.
For the five years. As we are analyzing the data, we go through the data, and we exclude expenditures that are not competable. So if you're paying for reimbursements to healthcare or you're paying your IRS bill, those are removed from the analysis. So I will get that answer for you and get it back to you.
Okay. Second question. So does your analysis include money that is spent with subcontractors? So maybe a prime contractor who is not a minority or women-owned business, but they're spending to subs who are? Does the study include those?
Yes, sir, where that information is available. So there was some information that the city had, and then also, we went to the prime contractors in the market to request that data. And that will be one of your recommendations also, is to collect that data. But yes, where that information was available, it does include all subcontractors, both MWBE and non-MWBE.
Yeah, so working for a big business that does a lot of subcontracting, I suspect you may have trouble getting that information from prime contractors who
Which was part of the delay. That's right, that's part of the delay. It's an important element of the study, which was part of the delay in completing the study.
Okay. And then my last question, in your analysis, do you distinguish between money spent with small businesses and money spent with large businesses? So that we get a sense of how much of the $354 million is going to small businesses?
No, sir, we do not. That data was not available in the data set that we received of the spend. And I don't know if we have a definition of what small is. We would need to, we would need to understand that. But we do not analyze the difference between small and large businesses.
Okay, thank you.
Quite welcome.
Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Mitchell, and always good seeing you.
Same here, Dr. Whitaker.
You performed excellent service when you were on the school board in the previous study. I had two questions, well, not two, but two that relate to what Mr. Hugel had asked. That figure of the $354 million, it did stand out when I saw it as being over five years. It came out to an average of $70,868,000, which seemed a little small over a five-year period. So those figures, then, within these categories that were mentioned, who determined that that was the amount of spend that took place over that five-year period?
Yep, we did work with the team to have them review the data. And according to what they have in their records, determined that that was all the spend for that study period. Now, again, that is a, that is a extract of the total data that we received because there were some categories that we excluded from that to equal the $354.
Okay, so in narrowing it down to $354, that was information that you received from a database, or was it provided?
From your financial system.
Okay.
It was provided to us through your financial system.
Okay, okay, yeah, that figure just seems a little small over that.
I'll be happy to work with the staff and get you some confirmations on that.
Okay, and then the other question relates to the subs, the question that was asked about the subs, a little more further detail on that. The issue with subcontracting was a recommendation that was made to the city in the last study. And so it's sort of problematic that I'm hearing you say, where is available when that was something that the city was supposed to have put in place based on a recommendation of the last study? So therefore, how reliable is it that we're going to get information on the subs?
So we did a couple of things. One, the city had some subdata on your public works contracts. So we did include that, that is reported as part of that contract. So we did receive some of that. But we also went to the prime contractors. We selected about 300 contracts that were $1 million and above in construction, professional services, and A&amp;E, and requested subcontractor data from prime contracts, from prime contractors. So the response was pretty low. We followed up with, we had a team put together to make phone calls to all of the primes. The city project manager helped us work with the departments to get in touch with the primes as well, and we just kept calling the primes. And we slowly but surely started getting some of that data in. It's not as robust as we would have liked, but we do have enough to provide an analysis of subspend.
Right, I'm troubled by that because, number one, it was recommended that the city do it, and the city did not do it. So I would expect that would be another recommendation again in this study. And I'm troubled by it because many of the contracts that minority companies receive because of bonding issues, not through the prime, but it's through those subcontract.
Right.
And I think particularly for a majority African-American city, not to be aggressive with that type of data. I'm very troubled by that, considering that it was recommended at the last. It was seen that, and I don't know if, working with previous cities, how that is, but it was seen with the leverage, if you're talking about at least $354 million, with the leverage that the city has, seemed like that could be put at the front end of a contract, making sure that those primes provide that data and that be driven by contractual language. And so I'm hoping that that will be so that we can correct that issue.
Yes, sir, we've seen that. And that's the only way it will work.
It is, it is.
It has to be contractual.
It is, and it's, and I just don't, it's intentional that it was ignored. And so I'm speaking, I'm not asking.
Okay, I was gonna say, I don't know.
No, I know Portsmouth, I've been here all my life. The issue with COVID and in the, in coming up with the ratio when we look at the utilization versus availability, how has COVID impacted availability figures? And if so, how are we going to adjust for that? Because I know from just listening to some of the statistics, the impact it has had with minority businesses not being able to get the PPP.
PPP loans, et cetera.
Loans, funds, and the other funds that have to be paid back, but particularly the PPT loans. How is that impacting on availability figures?
So we have seen a significant decline in the number of businesses in the marketplace. And we have done our own research on the impact of COVID to businesses. And so some of that will be assessed and discussed at a very high level in your report as we talk about availability. The adjustments that we have made to availability is to make sure that we are identifying those businesses that may have closed, even though they still have their Dun &amp; Bradstreet registration. If they have indicated that they have closed and adjusted the availability using statistical calculations to make sure we have that correct. That also is reflected in the utilization of MWBE firms as well, as well as anecdotal. So there is some research that we have already done on the impact of COVID to businesses in marketplaces. And we have done that for the Portsmouth marketplace. And we'll discuss some of that in the report as well. There has been, and even the way that the anecdotal or the qualitative data research is conducted, we have been creative by doing different things like mailing postcards. Because business climate and the business culture has changed, where people aren't working in offices, a lot more businesses are mobile. And so being able to reach out to those businesses where their old phone numbers are not what they were.
Okay, and then two more questions. The issue with black women businesses, how is that captured? Is that captured as a minority or a women business?
So black women would fall in the category of African-American businesses. And the woman category is captured as non-minority female or non-minority woman.
Okay, okay. And then my last question for right now, it deals with the pseudo-governmental agencies that we have, like Port Said Development and Housing, Economic Development Authority. What, is any of that data being assessed with any of the governmental agencies that we appoint boards and commissions that have substantial dollars in contracting?
I don't recall, but that is an answer that I will get back with you. I have to go and look at the data set and see if their agencies are included in that data. I don't recall off the top of my head.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Very welcome.
All right.
Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation, Ms. Mitchell, and it's good to see you in person. I think much of our initial communication began during the pandemic.
Exactly.
So a lot of it was virtual. So it's good to see your face today. A lot of my questions have been answered about the $354 million over the five categories, over the five years. I thought it was kind of small, too, but I guess we'll just wait and see, you know, what that total is. And the disparity equation, the utilization divided by the availability times 100, do we want that number to be, I mean, if it's small or large, does that, which one determines there is disparity?
Yes, if the disparity ratio, actually, the disparity ratio is below 100, because 100 is parity. But there's two ranges under that 100. If it's 80 or below, there's substantial disparity, meaning you have many more firms in the marketplace than you're spending dollars with. If it's 81 to 99, there's disparity, but there may, oops, there may be a cause of that disparity such as number of years in business, or you could have one or two minority women-owned firms who are winning the majority of the contracts, and you have much more availability, but you have one or two firms that are winning almost all of the contracts and all of the spend. So once, if we see that there's a disparity ratio between 81 and 99, we'll kind of dig deeper to figure out what we'll kind of dig deeper to figure out what is the cause of the disparity. And you can still actually address any remedies for that disparity, but it may not be substantial or statistically significant as it would be with 80 and below.
Right, okay, good. And under the initial findings, you mentioned quantitative, qualitative, and was one more category?
Private sector.
Private sector, okay. So that's the spending, the research, and, and then just the outcome of it all?
So, no, the, the three areas of the study that, that really need to align in order for recommendations for a program, a race and gender-based program. Private sector, qualitative, and quantitative.
Okay, and then once we determine if there is disparity, I mean, your job is done, but we as a council have to decide how we move on it. We don't want this to just to be a study that will sit on a shelf. We want to find some kind of policy or something that will move us to taking some action to maybe deleting or decreasing the disparity number.
Addressing the disparity.
Addressing.
Yes.
Addressing.
Yes, ma'am, that would be, that would be your action item, is to determine whether you want to accept the study and move forward with the recommendations of the study.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilman Hugel, so you have the floor.
Yeah, thanks again, Mr. Mayor. Just to follow up on the subcontractor question. As you're poking at that, if you can't get data that shows how much of that subcontractor money has gone to the businesses of interest, it would be helpful to at least quantify how much of the 354 million has been spent on subcontracts. So if 300 million of the 350 is going to subcontractors and we don't have particular insight, that's a problem because then we, we really don't have good insight into a small portion of the spend. On the other hand, if, if only 3 million of the 354 million's gone to subcontractors, then, then we have pretty good insight. So having some sense of, of, of how much insight we have into the 354 million would be helpful.
Absolutely, and we do have that data, so I'll be able to share that with you.
Thank you.
Councilman Moody, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Ms. Mitchell.
Hi.
How are you?
I'm well.
Also, on the subcontractor question, what percentage have actually, have you heard back from?
I would hate to quote what it was, but I will get an answer because I do have that data. So I will definitely get you an answer back.
Because I, I think without a, a large percentage getting back with you, I would think that would really have an adverse effect on the, the final draft that you would present to us.
Of the analysis. It does, it does limit our recommendations.
Because I would think that most large companies utilize quite a few subcontractors. And I think within the subcontractor community, I think there lies a lot of minority participation, of course, because subcontractors by their nature are normally smaller companies.
Correct.
And, you know, without that, I, I think it really would skew the final product.
It would definitely have some bearing on our recommendations, so I can definitely get that answer back to you as well.
Okay, thanks.
Absolutely.
Ms. Mitchell.
There are a couple of questions that I had, if you would just bear with me.
Sure.
First, are MWBEs required to have any certifications to participate or compete for business?
No, they do not have to be certified to compete for business. With a caveat to that is, is that should there be a recommendation for implementation of an MWBE program? The certification is the verification that the firm is owned and operated by a minority or woman. And so their verification, that certification would be utilized to count toward any goals that the city may implement.
Also, are there any requirements, legal or otherwise, based on your experience for primes to submit information about their subs? Is it, is it generally voluntarily, or, or is there any legal, legal arm to, to actually make that occur? In your, in your experience?
So in my experience of the 15 years that I have been conducting disparity studies, it usually is voluntary, is not effective. Contractually becomes more effective in collecting the data that is necessary for agencies to understand their spend.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
And I don't think there are any other questions. We appreciate all the work you're doing. Looking forward to moving the process forward, getting the final draft. Thank you and your firm, and I hope you have a great day.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Madam Manager, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you again, Ms. Mitchell. Next, we'll have our General Assembly update by Ms. Sherri Neal.
Good evening, Ms. Neal.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, interim city manager Terry, city attorney Ms. White, members of the community. This evening, it's that time of year again, and I am going to go over with you my final report dealing with the 2023 General Assembly session. This presentation is going to touch on the highlights of the 2023 General Assembly session. I'm providing a few examples of bills that the city of Portsmouth actually advocated for and against. Then I'll touch on our legislative initiatives, and I'll update you on the outcomes of those items. Turning then just briefly to the recent Federal Bipartisan Debt Reduction Act and any potential impacts that we may or may not feel because of it. And then turning quickly to the 2024 General Assembly outlook with important dates and next steps, and then any questions you may have, and I'll try my best to answer them. So as you may recall, the 2023 General Assembly session was a short session. It's called the off-budget year. Over 2,000 pieces of legislation was introduced and considered in six weeks worth of time. Out of that, over 1,600 pieces of legislation actually passed through the legislative process and will become new laws in the Commonwealth of Virginia as of July 1st of this year. Out of the 2,863 pieces of legislation that was introduced, I selected 353 bills that, for possible tracking and legislative advocacy for the city of Portsmouth. And other than that, you'll see, out of the ones that we actually worked on along with our colleagues in the area and the region, and as well as the organizations we're affiliated with, VML, Virginia First Cities, and VACO, 128 of 153 actually passed, and then 225 of them we actually were able to kill. To date, we do not have an amended budget for FY24. So the next two slides, just quickly, without going through which each of them are, was just some examples of some of the bills that we took action on that actually passed. And the next one would be those that we took action on that actually, we actually were able to kill. And I'm not going to go through all of those unless you have a particular question about anyone in particular. I'll move on to the impacts from our, the results of our legislative agenda. As you may recall, the council, our previous council had approved a charter amendment. So we had one charter amendment and two budget amendments within the package from the city. Our new council rescinded the request for the bill, which left us with two budget amendments. And as you will note on this chart and the ones following, wherever you see a red dollar sign, that means it was a budget item and it was either, and the budget's not been adopted. So we had a request for $4.8 million to match the 19.3 million federal grant that we received for the Complete Street Innovation Corridor, a budget item that got caught up in the whole budget debacle in Richmond. And then we also were looking for an increase in the road impact fees for the trucks for the Virginia Port Authority that also got caught up in the debacle of the budget. And the next two slides are the state public policy initiatives that we took a stance on, either positive or, well, not negative, but supporting or opposing. As you'll note, all of the red dollar signs mean that they had something to do with the budget item, so they were either discussed or maybe included in a version of a budget that didn't pass. But as of today, as I said, we still have, do not have an amended 24 budget. And then, of course, there were some of them, like the support of local authority to establish excise tax, sales tax on vaping products, that was not addressed. And just as recently going down the slide, we supported replacement of the Regional Greenhouse Gas Initiative funding if progress to be discontinued. That might be something that'll come back up in the next General Assembly session. But as of last week, the air, State Air Pollution Control Board sided with the administration, and they have taken Portsmouth out of that agreement. Turning quickly to the Budget Bipartisan Debt Reduction Act or the Fiscal Responsibility Act of 2023. Initially, when it first passed, I did a little bit of checking to see if there was going to be any impact possibly to local governments. And so I was told that, you know, as part of it, there's going to be a clawback on the COVID funds that's unspent or not allocated. And, but I was also told that that's generally in the agencies at the federal level, maybe at the state level, and that from, and Congressman Scott's office was sharing with me that their checking is that seems that the majority of localities have either spent that money or they've already allocated it. So if you've done either or, we're safe with that. Something that's going to maybe impact us down the road was, I was told, was the changes in the work requirements for the SNAP benefits. And they've increased the ages from 50 to 55 that you have to work in order to receive these benefits. Excuse me. But then I heard on a news broadcast someone saying that it might be more helpful than hurtful to people. So we'll have to see the outcome of that. And you may also know the other impacts that will have on our citizens is the bottom one, basically the restart of the federal student loan collection. Also, today, the Senate Finance and Appropriations Committee met. And the Secretary of Finance, Secretary Cummins spoke, and he said that they do not believe that there's going to be a major impact to the Commonwealth of Virginia from that debt reduction act. He said, at most, it should be minimal, and it might be over the next 12 to 18 months. Again, the committee met. They did not discuss anything about the budget. So turning to what we're looking forward to for the 2024 General Assembly session. We're in uncharted waters right now. This is the largest turnover of legislators at one time that any of us who have been doing this for a number of decades have seen. I was recently on a panel in Virginia Beach at the Virginia Local Government Managers Association, speaking on this subject. And the people on the panel with me collectively had over 100 years of experience dealing with the General Assembly, and everyone says the same thing. You've got, all 140 seats are up this year in November. There's been Republican caucuses. We've got primaries coming up this month. And the Senate alone, as you can see, 10 are retiring, 12 of the incumbents have challenges. The Senate Finance Appropriations Committee, eight of the 16 members are retiring. That's huge. You've got a lot of institutional knowledge going out the door. And then five of the Republicans that sit on that particular committee are leaving. So there's going to be a lot of changes in the committees, who's running the committees, and the loss of institutional memory. A lot of first-time legisla, I mean legislators we hear is going to be coming up there that are not familiar with local government. They don't have a clue about what we need or what we want. So establishing relationships as soon and possible as we possibly can is recommended straight across the board, and improving any other relationships we may or may not have with our legislators, not just ours, but the legislators, period. The challenge is that we're going to be in a new building, we hear. And we're finding out that the new building has tunnels for them to go exit their cars to get into the General Assembly building. And they have tunnels to take them from the General Assembly building over to the chamber. So catching them like we used to catch them out in the hallways and things is going to be challenging. Also, we're told that the way that the new offices are situated, you have to get through the administrative assistant to get to the legislative assistant to get to the legislator. So we've got a work cut out for us. So it's recommended from Virginia Municipal, sorry, Virginia Municipal League, VACO, VML, all of us to get out in front of this as soon as we possibly can and start speaking with the people that are running, letting them know what our needs are, what our challenges are, in developing these relationships. Oops, I skipped one. So that, with that being said, we're moving into our time to begin our 2024 preparations for our upcoming state and federal legislative packages. So through July and August, anyone who has any submissions, usually I check with all our department heads to see if they have any submissions that they want to put in. I have a few ideas that I have that I would like to also include in it for your consideration when we get to that point from the various committees and places I've been, information I've picked up. September timeframe is when we come back before council as usual with the draft for your comments and inclusions. Or of course, if you want to include something earlier, the better so that the research can be done prior to getting to that stage. October, November, we'll finalize both of our legislative packages. Election Day, of course, is on the 7th. I recommend that we do not have the joint meeting until after the election so that we'll know exactly who we're going to be dealing with as far as our delegation. If I'm not mistaken, I think we're losing one member at, before this redistricting. We had three senators and two delegates, and if I'm not mistaken, we're down to two senators and two delegates after this. And then prefiling for legislation begins on the 20th of November, ending in December. One note on the budget, if I may say. The, there's a thought being that we may not see a revised FY24 budget because of the politics and because of the election. There's a lot of money right now in the state coffers. And depending on who has the majority up there is going to get the say on which way the money goes. So it's a good bet that, because we are on a two-year budget cycle, we do have a budget for FY24. But there are certain things that was passed or discussed during the General Assembly session, like teacher raises and things, that was caught up in the amended one that hasn't gone through. And with that, that's the end of my presentation, and I'll try to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Neal. Councilman Tillage, so you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, Ms. Neal.
Good afternoon, Councilman.
First, I just want to commend you for your, the service that you've provided to the city of Portsmouth for the number of years. Being a person that's worked in the General Assembly, it is a very fast-paced environment. You've got a new relationship building. You've got to play the game that people despise, politics. But we commend you for that.
Thank you.
I was looking at the many different initiatives that the city has put forth for the number of years that go past 2023. And it looks as if we, we have some good initiatives that have been put forth. And I've spoken to some of my colleagues about this. I would like to see if it's the will of council, if we can put together a legislative committee that can work with you and city staff to help to develop a legislative agenda for us to take to Richmond and also to, to DC. With this, the turnover that we're seeing in the General Assembly, I think is very crucial that we really understand the importance of legislative items and how those things are done and identifying those, those projects and those needs. Not trying to get political, but you know, this election, we have an opportunity to have two very powerful members of the General Assembly next session. And so those two individuals being from the city of Portsmouth, as a council, we should be able to know right off, right off the top of our heads what those projects are and those ask that we are asking from our legislative officials. And so if it's the will of council, I would love to see us put together a legislative. And so if it's the will of council, I would love to see us put together a legislative liaison group, like we have similar to our other committees, that will work with our Legislative Affairs Department and our city staff to develop this project and to work on it as we lead up to these deadlines so that we, so that come November, we are, we're not just looking at very generic items, but we're looking at items that are very specific to the City of Portsmouth and that will lever, leverage us in the best position come January when we enter into the new General Assembly session. So if we can, if Ms. White, if you could maybe provide us on some guidance on how we can create that committee, and then we can go from there.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Yes, were you waiting for a response, Mr. Tillage?
Well, I was hoping that we would have some conversation on, you know, once we understand the, how we can create it, if you could tell us how it's created, and then from there, we can be able to determine if that's something that we would like to do.
May I speak?
You have the floor, ma'am.
Thank you. Mayor Glover, Councilman Tillage, thank you. I think that's an excellent idea. It's something that I have been trying to get on the agenda for all the years that I've been here. I've seen it at play in cities such as Charlotte, North Carolina, I've seen it at play in some other localities, and the more input and the more support that we have from our council people and our city and our staff members, the better. And so if that's at all possible for council's consideration and you decide to go forward, I would welcome it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Councilmembers, it's actually an easy process. Council discussed, just like with your other liaison appointments, who is interested in serving, having a conversation, making that decision, and go forward. It's not an overly technical process. Just decide among you who is going to take that on and go forward.
So I guess the question is to my council is the timeline, so when, when we can, when can we make this, this happen? It looks like the timeline, we're already entering into the season of legislative items. Being a former staff member, the summertime is definitely where the rubber starts to meet the road on getting these things together. So if we could talk maybe tonight on how, you know, who can serve, and then offline, we can discuss the meeting times that we can meet with the staff.
If I may, one more time.
You have the floor, ma'am.
Um, I, the time, timing is of the essence, and this is true. Virginia Municipal League is already beginning to meet, and they're beginning to discuss possible legislation and policies for the upcoming session. And of course, you know, Mayor, you serve on the Legislative Committee for Virginia Municipal League, and Councilman Tillage and Council, ma'am, sorry, Vice Mayor, Lucas Burke is also serving on one of the policy committees now, so, you know, and I'm great to see you out there. I've been asked to speak on an issue, and I haven't voted for a council yet because it's going to be something in the package, but they want me to kind of speak to it at one of their policy meetings, so the sooner we can try to get moving on this, if, it would be better. Thank you.
I, I think that's appropriate. Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Yes, and I hope that Mr. Tillage would be, based on his background, would be a person that would serve on that. I don't see why we couldn't, based on what Ms. White said, put that in place with our discussion either this evening or later in our regular meeting.
There's not a problem with it. We'll, we'll have the Personnel Committee. Most of our boards and commissions are handled through the Personnel Committee, and we'll make the recommendation and move it forward. And then we'll, and that's, that's, that's generally how we handle any board appointments and, and liaison appointments. So we'll, we'll make sure we make the recommendation, and then we'll follow up with it after that, sir.
Yeah, I was just going to say technically, that's not how it's done. I think it would be the will of council, how that would be done, and usually during the early part of our meetings in January, we establish those positions even before that, but I, I think it's an excellent suggestion, and thank you, Mr. Tillage. Ms. Neal, the issue I wanted to raise, the 6% to 5% corporate tax deduction that the governor is recommending, what impact might that have if it, if it is passed on such things as educational funding, or has that been worked out or balanced?
Mayor Glover, Dr. Whitaker, I do not have that answer, to be honest with you.
Okay.
But I can look into that and get back with you if you would like.
Okay, yeah, yeah. I was, it's an issue that I know has received a lot of publicity and with our education funding.
A lot of the concern was that because of the excess funding that's in the coffers for the state right now, the governor and his administration wants to give these tax deductions to corporations. The Democrats want to give it to education and other social, and, and their lives, the loggerhead that they've been going through. If they've done any analysis as far as what the impact would be to education, I'm not familiar, but I can look at that and let you know.
Okay. And then the, the last issue, this, this issue that is coming before the Supreme Court, dealing with these independent state legislators, has that been an issue that has been discussed amongst our delegates and as far as how that might impact local government policy?
Repeat that for me, please.
This independent state legislature is, is the, I think it's a Moore case that's coming before the Supreme Court, and it has a lot of impact, I know with the voting issue, but it could also have some other ramifications, and I was just curious if that's, there's been any discussion.
It hasn't come up at any meeting that I've been at just yet. I know there's going to be a conference of state legislators just coming up soon, and I've gone to the last one, I hope to go into this one, so if it comes up there, I'll be able to get some more insight into it, and then I can relay that back as well.
Yeah, I think that may be coming down from the Supreme Court this month.
Yeah, because they always tell us about Supreme Court cases that impact local government. So, yeah, I see it, okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Neal, for the presentation, and thank you for the work that you do to assist us when we go into meetings like Virginia Municipal League and the Virginia First Cities. Being a guide to help walk us through some of that has been really helpful in the early years. This, this presentation is packed full of information that we can use to move forward, but one of my questions was the not addressed items, not just the one that's listed here, but those that, that were not spoken about as well. Does that mean that these items will not be heard again, or do they get an opportunity to come back before the General Assembly in the new session?
Thank you, Mayor Glover, Vice Mayor. Generally, there are policy positions that come back until they're discussed or something happens to address them somewhere down the line. So those that are, have not been addressed, I'm sure will come back up again, we can include them again, if it's something that we feel passionate about, that we want to still keep it out there on the forefront. I will say that we've been cautioned also to, whatever we bring forward, we need to understand that there is a whole new cadre of people that's going to be up there, and we don't know how the politics is going to shake out. So you don't want to take anything too controversial that might be detrimental to the city or whatever, you know, just kind of wait to see how things are going to shake out up there next year, so.
Right. And the second question is the lack of a budget. Is there any concern that we should be concerned about? We offering raises to our employees, we have our school board with information, funding for our schools that we match funds, so this lack of a budget, is there any concerns that we need to really be looking at now?
If I'm not mistaken, those increases, especially with the schools and the salaries and the other people with salaries, some of it was contingent upon a match at the, at the state level. So without the FY24 amended budget, the match wouldn't be there. So it's not that you couldn't make the increase, but it wouldn't, if they were supposed to get five and you're doing two and a half and they're doing two and a half, it comes down to the two and a half.
Right.
So.
Okay. And then the last question is to my colleagues. As the person who has been elected to serve as Chair of Virginia First Cities, and we do a lot of this policy with the state, I would like to be one of the persons to serve with liaison for this policy. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Neal.
Thank you.
Madam Manager, you have the floor.
Thank you. This is just a quick, brief update about the garages. So Harbor Court Garage, the elevator is currently operational, all damaged glass in the vestibules have been replaced. The vendor has ordered the security cameras and accessories along with other items for the video surveillance at the facility. Installation is anticipated to start the first week of July. For the County Street Garage, city staff continues to move forward with plans to demolish the garage and convert the facility to a surface lot as a temporary condition until the new garage is constructed. The second and third floor of the garage are not currently available to the public. Some portions of the first floor near the exit ramp are blocked off for safety reasons. Staff will be blocking the stairwell across the upper floors. Bid packages for the demolition phase have been prepared. They include abatement, demolition, and various packages to address operational and regulatory requirements associated with the intermediate condition. Police security has been provided after hour patrols for the parking garages with the emphasis on the Harbor Court Garage. An outside contractor has been procured to provide monthly cleaning of the garage facilities. Additional cleaning services are provided as requested. Thank you, sir.
Are there any questions on that item for my colleagues on council? Councilman Hugel, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Madam City Manager, I'm told that the Parking Authority has only been meeting sporadically, and the last couple of meetings have been canceled, and I've also heard some concerns that members of the Parking Authority feel like they're not being heard regarding the design for the new County Street Garage, taking aboard lessons learned from, from some of the issues that we, we've had with the garages. So I encourage that we get the Parking Authority involved, and, and in those discussions, make sure that we're getting input from our, our board members on, on where we're going with the County Street Garage. Thank you.
We have now come to item four, City Manager Report Overview.
CMR 23-205, and I'll round the numbers for an easier read. For For Life, $75,000 from the Virginia Department of Health Offices of Emergency Medical Services is a grant fund for $75,274. Parks and Recreation, a CMR 23-206, Kids Meals Program, $399,000 grant funded from the Department of, for the Department of Parks and Recs through the Department of Education. CMR 23-207, adoption for $602,000 from the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice, which is a grant, to fund and operate local probation and pre-trial services. 23-208, Shelter Plus Care, $569,000 from the Department of Housing and Urban Development for Behavioral Healthcare Services. 23-209, $27,000 from Developmental Disability Residential Support from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Healthcare. That concludes my CMR summary, but I would like to add something. I would like to acknowledge Dr. Dallene Sparks, Washington, she's not here, from the Portsmouth Volunteers for the Homeless. She has received her honorary doctorate from, of missionary, of missionary degree from the Bible College of Theological Seminary. Congratulations to Dr. MD and PhD.
We will congratulate her formally at another time, for sure. That comes to item number five, City Council Liaison Reports. Are there any City Council Liaison Reports? Seeing none, there's no, there are no special calls or any closed sessions at this time. That concludes our public work session, and we will adjourn until 7:00 PM for our regular council meeting. Thank you.